Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for attending tonight. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody here for public comment tonight? Alright, anybody out in the interwebs that has anything for comment, please email the district. Someone will get back to you. Go on to board discussion. We have the board minutes from the December 9th meeting. Questions or concerns on those? Motion to approve those? Oh, I add over there all by himself. Seconded, Kelly, all in favor? Anybody have anything else for board discussion tonight? Move right along the superintendent's report then.
Good evening, Happy New Year. And then there was five. Couple things before I, I don't have a big report tonight, but just a couple of things I want to start with is first of all, I want to thank the PTA for their gifts for the Board of Education tonight, Board of Education Recognition Month. And they purchased soft drinks, cheesecake, and chocolate-covered pretzels for the board to enjoy after the meeting. So thank you, representatives from PTA who are here. Appreciate your continuous appreciation that you bestow upon members of this organization. We appreciate everything you do as well. Also want to thank a number of agencies for donations. We have books from the Cubby Fable Memorial Fund, books given to every student, grades pre-K through 5th. And they receive some help from the senior class in the distribution. So always an annual cause and we really appreciate that. $225 donation from Joe Bowman to be used for Kingsborough Elementary School Art Show and Science Fair. That's Lynn Bowman's husband, guidance counselor in that building, so thank you, Joe. We have a $2,500 donation from Fidelis Care to be used for our backpack program. So we appreciate generosity of that organization. Also want to point out several retirements on tonight's agenda. A lot of years of service here for a few people. We have Paul Malagizi, reading teacher at Boulevard currently, but has probably been in many buildings. Thirty-seven years of service to Glover's and Large School District. And Kimberly Messino, district music teacher currently in the high school with 32 years of service. So thank those ladies for their, let's see, 67, 69 years of collective service. Wish them a long, healthy, happy retirement. And there's one more late addition donation. We received winter apparel from First Choice Federal Credit Union. And certainly know that that has put to good use for our scholars, especially in a cold winter like we're having this year. So thank you to all those organizations and individuals for their generosity. Couple of things just want to point out. One, winter condition reminder, we had a three-car accident this morning. Nobody was injured, thank God, but just remind parents and staff members when you're coming onto campus, it is January, drive carefully. This campus in particular is on a hillside. Certainly, safety is our highest priority. And our bills and ground staff work certainly many hours, but they have a lot to do. So it's incumbent upon all of us to be careful when we're driving on campus. That said, you know, attendance at schools is critical. And on those two-hour delay days, we certainly encourage parents, guardians to make every effort to get their children to school. We've had a number of people, children showing up to school on days that we are delayed or closed. Elementary students, in particular, we had some students outside Park Terrace last Friday. So I remind parents and guardians, listen to your local TV stations. Look at our website. If you are not receiving the all-call messages from me, they're either text messages or a voice call. If you're not getting the two-hour delay message roughly around 5:30, or the cancellation message came in roughly around 7:50. We had some people showing up. Again, if I'm canceling, the weather's poor, so we don't want people necessarily on the road. So we just encourage folks to look at your TV stations, look at the website. And if you're not getting my messages, contact my office and we will certainly get, make sure that you are receiving the messages henceforth. Sometimes people change their phones and they don't update the school. So we are, we have never hit 100%, but we would love to make sure that every parent guardian is receiving the messages, especially in accordance with inclement weather notices. We had mold testing at the middle school in Park Terrace. BOSI staff upstairs were concerned that there's some mastic on the floor, it's coming through with some moisture. We did mold testing in six classrooms and I'm happy to report that all those came out negative. Both air testing and tape testing on the floor and the locations that they thought. Our engineers and architects told us they did not think it was mold and happily to report, happy to report that it is not. And we also had a parent concerned about the kitchen area of Park Terrace and suggesting it was negatively impacting her children's health. So we did the same thing, our due diligence and tested over there. And luckily we found a company that can do it quite a bit cheaper than we've had in the past. So we appreciate his efforts and he's been very responsive. So I'm happy to report those two areas of people were concerned we had mold. We do not, happy to share those reports with any individual who's interested in seeing them. Administrative changes, obviously Tom Chacchio is our high school interim principal. Although he's only here three days a week, Tom's a well-known entity, a seasoned administrator. He's doing a fine job, acclimating himself. Christina is still spending quite a bit of time up there, making sure that the transition is smooth and making sure Tom has what he needs. And obviously him not being there two days a week, she is still spending a lot of time in high school, but also is freeing herself up to do a lot more curriculum work at the secondary level. And on top of that, we got Sarah Madarazzo, Chris and I met with Sarah today and other special ed administrators. She is acclimating herself well, already did some tours with State Ed of some of our classrooms. And very happy to report that those three individuals in their capacities are doing well. And last but not least, Brian Von Ostrin, our new dean in high school. Spoke with him and spoke with Dave Waring and Christina and Brian. And Brian seems to be doing very well. So happy to report administrative changes are going well. Reminder, on February 3rd, we will be receiving, the Glover's Teacher Association will be presenting for two Stage III grievances. So I encourage all board members to make it to that meeting. Hopefully we'll have a full contingent. And that will be at our February 3rd board meeting. And there's two GTA grievances that will be presented for Stage III for the board. And last but not least, I want to have a conversation about the MECO building. So a little before Christmas, I contacted the board, let you know that the, not Mental Health Association, Family Counsel Center, thank you, was interested in possibly renting the MECO building. They have received a grant and they're looking for a new location to expand their services, certainly which would be great. They do great work in our community and if they're able to service more community members, that's going to help our families as well. So as, you know, as we all know, that building is currently mothballed. Being able to use that building, first of all, it's good for the building itself to be utilized and not mothballed. And also if the district was able to receive some kind of income to cover the maintenance costs for plowing, mowing, general upkeep, that would make sense, keeping the heat on. So we've been doing a deeper dive on this, working with our financial consultant, RG Timms Associates, our insurance company. And we don't have all the figures we need, but the news we have isn't great. Right now, so Kathy might be better at explaining this than I am, but I'll give it a shot. Some, the aid we receive comes through DASNE for any capital projects. And there is a pledge that districts have that they not rent the buildings that they are receiving aid on. So we've done work in that building and this most recent project, the end of the project prior to it. We don't have the exact figures of what we owe on it because you'll, they have to go back to 2005 to look at how much debt service the district has and how much of that debt service is actually related to the MECO building. But at the end of the day, I don't know how quick of an answer that they need to find a location for a July 1 expansion. I don't see the Glover's and Large School District being in any position to agree to a rental. It's unfortunate, I think it'd be great to rent that. But unless it was a BOSI's, I believe, because BOSI's was in there, if it's, if it's a BOSI's, it's almost like a continuation of our own programs. So Glover's Old School District decided to expand and create a middle-level career tech edge place. If we had the money and the resources to do that, we could do it. And we could open it up and run, that has a CO, a certificate of occupancy. And if BOSI's wanted to rent it for a program, they could do it. And we would continue to receive aid on it. If we try to rent that out to a non-educational agency, that DASNE pledge puts an end to that. So that's my understanding. Kathy, is that correct?
Yeah. I did get some numbers from the Tims late this afternoon, but I have to wait and see what our bond counsel weighs in at. There is actually, we're actually not receiving any aid on that anymore. But we are bonding for the portion of this project. So we're just waiting to see what Conne Cal says from, from Berkeley Damon.
So the only aid that we would owe is from this most recent project?
Well, we owe $155,000 for the EPC project. But other than that, right now, we don't, there's no mark, there's no aid being generated.
How about the roof and the secure vestibule and the work that was done for this?
It hasn't been bonded yet.
Okay.
We're still doing a bond, we're still have a bond anticipation note on that, so.
The water, the water system we put in there, so ballpark would be $750,000 to a million?
Yeah, I would say so, probably.
So.
Unless we don't bond through DASNE. If we don't go through DASNE, then it would, I don't know how that works.
Okay. You know, I guess I am seeking direction from the board on what you want us to do. I'm guessing you want us to do our due diligence, get a fair market assessment appraisal of what that property is worth. Get the exact figure of what we owe on it. Unfortunately, my guess is, no, in this community right now, we cannot get what we owe for it at this time period. I'm just going out on a limb, I'm going to guess that. But maybe it's not as big a divide as it seems. It's a beautiful place. I mean, in the right, for the right purpose, that could be used in many different ways. It's got great outside facilities, it's, you know, it's been well-kept, it's got a brand-new water system, new secure vestibule, nice office, a little bit of painting and some interior cosmetic work. And there's one area of the roof, they have a brand-new roof over half of it. The other roof needs to be done, but otherwise the heating, ventilation, everything's in great shape. Wireless access points all over the place. So if the board wants us, we will continue to move down the road to at least put ourselves in an educated position and find out what we can and cannot do with that building. In a perfect world, BOSI's would rent it to create a middle-level career tech ed school, magnet school for this region. We've talked to them about that. I just, you know, we need the BOSI's and other component districts to make that work. I think it's centrally located, I think it's a great spot for such a program. But Glover'sville doing it on our own, I don't see how we could sustain it with your hiring administrators, clerical, nurses, food services, even if you transported the food. I'm just not sure that we could occupy that building if that would be the best expenditure of our resources. Although I do think some sort of career tech education program for middle-level education, middle school and even lower high school could be a game changer for a lot of at-risk scholars in our district. I'm just not sure it's feasible at this point to try to spend a lot of energy and time determining how to use that building without regional assistance. Maybe I'm wrong. There might be a way to do it that's feasible, that's financially, you know, responsible. But I, at this point, it seems like a bridge too far to me. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't look at it, it's the numbers. So we'll come back, we'll come back to you on that. But I, I'll contact the Family Counsel Center and let them know that as of right now, if it's July 1 date, I don't, I think they're going to have to find a different facility. And they were primarily interested in a lease to own, like wanting to buy that facility within a few years. I don't think the district's going to be in any position to do that. But I don't know that for a fact either.
Take the entire building?
And I, you know, if the Board of Education is interested in selling that building, you might be, in five years, you might feel a lot different. If that sits vacant for five years, the board at that time might be chomping at the bit to unload it. But you folks right now might be thinking, you know what, let's tap the brakes, let's walk into this, it's a great facility. There's not that many regional programs or facilities that are vacant for educational purposes. I mean, Jansen was just sold. Jansen Avenue Elementary was a regional school for P-Tech, that's been sold. You know, McNabb is occupied. All of our school buildings are almost at max capacity. So might be worth holding on to. So I'll, we'll try to do our due diligence and get you the best up-to-date information in the next few months and legally inform you of exactly what you can and cannot do with that facility. That completes my report, unless there's any questions. I will need executive session to talk about personnel.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the administrative reports and I'll turn it over to Kirsten Thompson, principal from Kingsborough Elementary.
First strike. Hi, everybody. I'm Kirsten Thompson. I am the principal over at Kingsborough Elementary. So this year we do have an SUP. We have been identified through the New York State assessments at start in grade three. They take a look at the scholars that are not performing, where they would like them to, and they trace it back. And that was Kingsborough this year. So we have two commitments when we have an SUP. And our first commitment is improving attendance by reducing chronic absenteeism, building stronger relationships with families and students, and to improve early literacy using our Tier One program, CKLA with fidelity and the use of our PLCs. So all of that is kind of happening organically under our MTSSI work. So that is the umbrella in which we incorporate all of the academic, social, emotional, behavioral, and attendance tiered support services. So for the attendance goal, I have a few years' worth of attendance here. And this is up until this point in the year. I use the date January 10th. So we have been trending about the same. We are on an upward trend a little bit this year. We ended the school year at 89.9 and 89.8, the last two. So I'm really hoping to maintain this 90.8 and improve as the school year goes on. So in order to do that, we have some new initiatives that we're rolling out. We developed, we as in our admin and building MTSS teams last year, a structured attendance protocol. And it's a very simple, it's a one-pager, it's easy for everybody to read, and everybody knows what their role is, from the classroom teacher to the school nurse to the main office secretary. And we are tracking that communication through school tools so it is consistent and it's accessible by all that is working in the attendance teams. We even developed some scripts for teachers to help them through the conversations, to give them support in order to help the families feel like we are calling just because we care. We don't want to make any family feel uncomfortable. We just want to know if there's anything we could do to help and support and get your scholar to school on a regular basis. A check-in, check-out, that is an intervention that we are using. I have 15 adults in the building, so it ranges from teachers to aides to TAs and other support staff that have volunteered to participate in this program. We've rolled it out kind of slow, starting with a couple of kiddos here and there, where they come into school, they meet with their person of choice most of the time, and they start working on that relationship. Sometimes it's an old relationship that they're continuing, sometimes it's a brand-new relationship. They talk about the school day, what's going to happen, how excited we are. End of the day, they come back in, "How was your day? Did you have fun? We can't wait to see you tomorrow." So it's really just trying to ignite some excitement and let our scholars know that we all care about them and we notice when they're not here. And lunch bunch groups, we do that for social-emotional learning, but this is particularly for our attendance students that we are doing the check-in, check-out with. So that is being hosted by our school counselor, our social worker. And also our Family Counseling Center counselor is going to be starting her own groups as well. So it's just something that's happening periodically, rotating groups through once a week, just to give them another little extra thing to look forward to. For our academic achievement, the PLCs, our professional learning communities, they are taking place bi-weekly for every grade level. And during that time, we are discussing within the hour both ELA and math. And the focus is beginning with fidelity. We want to make sure that the programs that we have chosen for our district are being used the way they're supposed to be used and to its fullest. That is key, because then we can guarantee that all scholars across all classrooms in the grade level and all grades are getting that consistent education. So right there, we begin to delete any learning gaps that could, that could exist. And the alignment is key, that we are all having those conversations, we are on track with our pacing, and we are making sure that the delivery of the instruction is consistent, as well as the delivery of any assessments. And the grading of the assessments are all aligned and consistent. And from that alignment, from the core data in the ELA and math curriculums, we can then have our data-driven instruction which flows over into our WIN groups. So these are examples of how we track that assessment data. This is our ELA, the skills and knowledge. And this is our math. Everything is broken down by question, standard, and what exactly it is that they're learning. So if we see a trend, they are color-coded. So when the data is put in, you will see green, yellow, red. It's easy to track that trend. If we do see a trend where there's groups of students that are missing particular standards, whatever they are, that makes it easy for teachers to go back during that WIN time and spiral review those skills.
Can anybody read those?
I know, it's so tiny. I tried my best, I'm so sorry.
I hope the teacher can.
There's no, there's, yeah, these are empty, these are empty. Okay, so during that WIN group, what I need, so that is that data-informed instruction. So we have two levels, well, three levels of WIN. And that is our, our yellow groups that get, those are our CUSP kids, they're almost right there. They are with our classroom teachers and we group them by skill deficit of what they need. We have our enrichment groups, kids that are doing great, need to be pushed up a little bit higher. And then we have our Tier Three groups where the instruction is a little bit more explicit and done by the reading specialist or math AIS teacher. All of that data comes from specially diagnostic assessments. And this is an example of how we track it. This is a first-grade student. And you can see that, well, you can't see because it's so tiny, I know. But the way we're tracking it, we can see how they're scoring, every progress monitor in every two weeks. And we can also see phonics levels and how they're growing. And that is just another example. It is a little bit bigger. This is an example of how we are tracking our math WIN data. The scale being taught is on the left. And every progress monitor that's being tracked gets a score and you can see growth. We are at benchmarking time right now. So we have universal screeners that are used three times a year for our benchmarks. In ELA, it is the dibbles. I do have comparison scores for kindergarten because we benchmarked kindergarten one week earlier. This week, first grade and second grade is being benchmarked. So from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, you can see that we went from 61 students, that was well below, down to 51. Our yellow has gotten a little bit better. And our green, our green yes is moving up. So we had 12 students that were at benchmark at grade level, we now have 16. And we are about the same at above benchmark. So from beginning of the year to middle of the year, we are seeing growth. So end of the year, we will have our third column filled. So our math benchmarks, this is a look at the entire school. So last year coming in, we had 42 students that were at risk, 55 in Tier Two and 3% in Tier One. This year coming in, so that means it's our last-year kindergarten, our last-year kindergartners and last-year first graders, we're down by almost half of our at-risk students. So now we are at 25%, 71% in Tier Two and 4% in Tier Three. So it is evident that they came back after the summer with more skills than the previous year. And this is just a quick look at how last year went with the three benchmarks. You can see the growth.
Kirsten, when you have a, like, I see there's like 95 kids tested at the beginning of the year and 86 at the middle of the year.
That, yes.
That attendance, obviously, do we ensure we get those scholars in to get them tested?
We do to the best of our ability. Sometimes you run into an issue when they're transient, they're going out. And then sometimes they come back in before the end of the year too. And that does skew our numbers and percentages a little bit. So we have also made a lot of growth in our social-emotional development with our PBIS. That was our first focus in our MTSSI. We made a change last year where our school counselor and social worker was pushing into classrooms to teach the weekly lessons. Previously, it was on the teacher and their teacher in the schedule of the classroom. And they are aligned with the morning announcements. Our Tier One work has been extensive. We had to improve the fidelity of the program. The program still existed, but it was very piecemeal. We, we did a lot of the fun stuff, a lot of the activities, but the core had kind of dissolved a little bit. So we created new literature for families and staff, including a handbook and a pamphlet to go home. We've updated our scholar spotlight. We got the scholar, second-grade scholars are actually leading the beginning of our assemblies now with the Pledge of Allegiance. We've gone back to making sure that we are teaching the PBIS expectations throughout the school. So we have signs of the expectations of every different part of the building. Now, beginning of the year, after any long break, and then towards the end of the year, we are re-teaching those stations. It is just a scheduled day where classes rotate. We have support staff that stand in each station and they teach those expectations. It's pretty interactive, it's fun, it does not take long, each station is eight to 10 minutes. And it makes a big difference. We're just reiterating to the scholars and the staff of the building that these expectations are important. And our Tier Two work, that is new this year. And our tier-two work, that is new this year, we're really diving in on that. So we're working on the structure of the tier-two. That is giving students more behavioral support or emotional support. We're making sure we're using research-based programs, that we're collecting the data, we're analyzing that data, and we're making decisions based on it. We are trying to continue to improve our family and community engagement. These are some of the things that we have done. It's our scholar spotlights, our parent volunteers in the classroom. Our numbers are increasing. The Fall Festival was fantastic, Veterans Day was fantastic. Social media is a help. We get a lot of interaction on Parents Square. And our PTA, so thank you, PTA. You've made great strides in helping us connect with the community better. And our next PTA meeting is January 20th, 6:00 PM at the Boulevard Library. If anybody wants to attend, you do not have to be a paid member, it is open to anybody. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
There you go.
All right, excellent, awesome. Good evening, thank you for having me. And I've brought some new information, some new things that we're doing, some updates from some of the things I talked about last year. So we'll dive right in. Over at Park Terrace, we've got three big goals this year. The first is K-2 alignment. And Kirsten and I have been doing a lot of really intentional work across our two buildings to ensure that we are on the same page, our teachers are on the same page, and the students in our buildings are getting a comparable education that we can expect the standard from Gloversville. We're also focused on academic achievement. Kirsten went into depth on the model that we're using with our PLC. And we're also really continuing to extend our commitment to CKLA and the iReady Math Classroom Curriculum. Those are our two tier-two curricula. And last year was really a relaunch. And so now we're in that real work of like really keeping it going and keeping that momentum going. And finally, at Park Terrace, we're really focused on getting our families involved. And so we're doing a lot of really intentional things about welcoming our families in, engaging them in instruction and what's happening with their children in the building, but also getting them involved in some fun stuff. So I'll give you some highlights about that as well. So first, with our K-2 alignment, Ms. Thompson and I meet monthly. We do kind of a formalized administrative check-in so that we're both touching base with each other on different issues that arise and impact both of our buildings so that we can present a united front to our staff, our shared staff, and our grade levels so they get clear and consistent communication from the two of us. We have common grade-level meetings across the building, so our teachers meet in common grade levels. We have shared PLC schedules. We don't meet together just because of the, how that works with the schedule and getting people in the same place at the same time. But we do have this year a common note-taking document, which has been really helpful in bridging, again, the alignment. We're meeting at the same time, and we can see each other's notes in real time. So we're able to see what each other's talking about and comment to each other so that those decisions can happen really organically right there in those meetings. The biggest thing that we took on this year that I'm the most excited about is our common PBIS planning. We did a really big, work-intensive day over the summer with our shared PBIS teams where we brought the two teams together. And we did a lot of work in understanding the foundations of PBIS, which is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports. And we created a lot of shared documents and items. We made plans for activities that would be common in the two buildings. We planned themes that would help to enhance the second-step curriculum that Kirsten spoke about. And then also made updates to our matrix, which is kind of like that document that outlines everything about PBIS and what we teach and where, and also our handbook. So we now have a common PBIS handbook across both of our buildings as well. We worked with some new age-appropriate signs. We walked through our building and we looked at our PBIS signs, and they had all written out explanations of how to behave in the different settings. But most of the kids in our building are not reading at the level to read these really informative signs. So we adapted to some that had some imagery to help the children see the model of what the kids should look like. And we also launched this really cool golden ticket initiative in collaboration with Boulevard. Where some of our community partners and businesses, we gave them golden tickets. And then we asked them if they were seeing our scholars conducting themselves in ways that were respectful, responsible, safe while they were out in the community, they could present them with the golden ticket, and they bring that back into school. And we celebrate them for being recognized in the community. So a great way to build on those partnerships. We've had a couple come in from all three of our elementary buildings. So that's a lot of fun, and this is one of our golden ticket receivers right here, proudly showing it off when she came into school. Academic achievement, so this is a huge press for us at Park Terrace and really across the district. Our tier-one instructional fidelity, which I mentioned before, is such an important focus, really continuing the work that we started last year. WIN, which is what I need, that's that instructional block that Kirsten was talking a little bit about. And we're focused on implementing those with the greatest amount of impact for the students. I'm going to talk a little bit more about some of the things that we're doing at Park Terrace to enhance that. And also our attendance support, direct connection between attendance and academic achievement. You've got to be there to learn. So we're really trying to encourage our students to be there as much as they are healthy enough to be there. I have some really cool updates on our growth and achievement. So last year, I talked to you a little bit about some of the changes that we'd made in our curriculum and the impact of the WIN. This was us at the beginning of last year, and this was us at the end of last year. So you're seeing a really dramatic change in, this is our math results. So we had 50% in that red zone, which means they were well below where they needed to be. This is our school-wide data. And then at the end of the year, 17% in that red zone. So that's insane. Yeah, it's just really exciting to see that kind of growth. We see it in the kids, and we see it in what they're able to do this year. But it's really neat to see it look like that in front of us. And then this is our same, very similar for our ELA results. So again, we're seeing a 36% in that red zone, well below where they needed to be, and 10% by the end of the year in that red zone across the building. So huge props go to our teachers who are implementing the CKLA, that tier-one, and then also doing the work of WIN. So that's super exciting, and I'm so glad to share it with you. So we're not resting on that success, though. We're just trucking along, and we're doing some really cool things with our math WIN especially. So I want to highlight that for you tonight and really give a shout-out to Julie St. Amore. She's our math AIS provider, and she's really the dynamic, exciting force of math WIN at Park Terrace. We have adapted our WIN model last year. We did rotating our scholars from room to room based on those skill groups. We really focused on that with just the ELA. This year, we've expanded it to math, and our first and second-grade scholars are rotating from room to room during their math WIN as well. So what that means is even more individualized support, even more focused, drill-down, skill-level groups for all of our first and second-grade scholars in their math WIN. We've also dedicated one of our teaching assistants, Gia Bettencourt, as a math TA. She does other stuff as well, but she's been working with our math AIS provider, and she's able, we're able to extend the reach of our math AIS provider by utilizing her because she's able to do a lot of the reteaching of those focus skill areas. So what happens is our AIS teacher comes in for a short period, and then that math TA comes in, and so we get almost double that instructional time that's focused on that skill that that scholar needs. We're reviewing our data constantly. We're using the same methods that Ms. Thompson talked about, so I won't go over all of that again. All the same spreadsheets and all of that stuff. During our tier-one meetings where we're going over our data, our teachers are noticing our basic fact fluency is needing some more attention. So we've done some instructional improvement cycles on looking at how we can better do that and what kinds of instruction is going to help to beef our scholars up with those basic facts. We know we're doing a lot of problem-solving work and a lot of creative thinking with math, but we also know that the kids need that quick fact recognition in order to be able to get into more higher-level, complex math. So we're making that a priority. And our groups are flexible. Nobody's ever locked into a certain group at a certain time. We're constantly evolving and shifting our students from group to group. Got some great things happening with attendance as well. So I did a little bit of a run of some of what our attendance has looked like historically. So at this point in the year, I ran our September to December numbers. So two years ago, we were at 88.8% building attendance. Last year, at this point in the year, we were at 89.4, and now we're at 91%. So it's not a dramatic change, but it's a nice steady movement in the right direction. So I'm proud of it, and I'll take it, and we're just going to keep going with that. Again, I also ran another comparison when we look at students with 18 or more absences. So two years ago, at this point in the year, we had 21 scholars with 18 or more absences. Last year, at this point in the year, we had 23, and today we have 15. So another nice trend in the right direction. Some of what we're doing, I think, is making an impact on our attendance, hopefully. Some of those things that we're doing is early outreach to families, getting connected with them as soon as we notice a little concern with attendance, getting lots of community support resources. We've been using LaShawn Hawkins, as well as our counseling team, to get information out to families who need help with medical support. We do a really fun intervention around attendance as an ice cream chart, and our counseling staff does, will meet with that child every day. And if they come every day, they get an ice cream coupon for Stewart's. And we see really good results for that. They just get excited that somebody's looking for them, somebody's checking on them, and they get ice cream. Simple, but it's been really effective for us. The, adding the additional shuttle bus stop, I think, has had an impact for us. We've been getting lots of families connected with shuttle bus. Transportation is a perennial concern for families, so having that as a more ready option is making a difference. And we call, we send letters, and we visit homes as well. So all of those things are all happening. And our family involvement, we've been making lots of little shifts in lots of areas to boost our family involvement. Personally, I've been sending out monthly newsletters with more information about our goals and what's going on in our building. Osama is awesome at getting those videos out, and I know that the community loves to see that. The kids will come in and they'll say, "I saw your movie." So they're definitely well-received. And we've been inviting families to more school events. We had a really special holiday sing-along. We invited a couple of parent volunteers from each class, and it was just a really nice way for families to be there and enjoy that and be a part of that. We did the same thing at Thanksgiving with our Thanksgiving feast. We've had some special events in our building, which has been wonderful. Shout-out again to the PTA for hosting Spooky Stem Night at Park Terrace that helped just get families in the building. And another shout-out to LaShawn Hawkins. She's done a lot of community outreach and has used our basement for some really magical things happening down there, which has just been another way of getting families in the door, and I think that helps us move that forward. As far as the instructional side, we've got a grade-level focus on sharing the assessments that students are taking in the classroom, sharing those home on a regular basis. Previous past practice was to just hold those and collect them as like a data set on the student, but we felt that we're going to get a little bit more from that by sending that home so families are seeing it and able to reflect on what their student is doing more in real time. We've reformatted some of the knowledge assessments. They didn't have a lot of information, so when families saw them, they didn't really make sense. So we've added some questions on there so that families can read it along with their child and say, "Oh, okay, I see what you're, were being asked, and I see where you scored." And we're also utilizing the check-in, checkout intervention that Ms. Thompson talked about. It's a behavioral intervention, and it gives families daily feedback on their child's behavior and helps them really understand what their child's doing at home and talk about it at, I'm sorry, what their child's doing at school and talk about it at home, which is another really nice, positive way that we're just building that communication and that relationship with our families. We've done some cool things so far this year. We've had a lot of fun activities. One of the highlights, we were able to take a visit to the Globe Theater, which was a great community connection. This is some of our scholars posing in front of the stage. Very able to see a movie, and they just really rolled out the red carpet for us, like the disco lights were going. It was just a magical time. So we were really able to, happy to be able to do that. And some of our other things, we had the Ellen Sinopoli Dance Company, which has been traditionally a residency that we found with our second graders, and it did not disappoint again this year. So we're off to a great start. Any questions?
Well done.
Thank you.
Rob, before you go, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our two primary principals. You know, I think they just covered a lot of ground. I hope you see the positivity, the focus on a few important things, the academic congruency between the two buildings, the cooperation, the PLCs, the continuous growth mindset that our teachers are buying into, the focus on those two curriculum pieces, math and ELA, and doing them with fidelity and having fun, you know, bringing joy to what we're doing and getting parents in the buildings, pulling back the curtain, showing what we're doing, why we're doing it, how we're doing it, and really focusing on that relationship piece. So I feel like the primaries are in great hands. You two ladies, I feel like you lead by example, by being positive-minded and keeping that growth mindset. And more than anything, the cooperation between the two of you is, seems something like, of course, two primary buildings are going to do the same thing. And that's not that easy. And it's not always like sometimes herd and cats. Not in this district with these two administrators at that level. We don't really have to worry about competition or, oh, they're doing this and we're going to do that. They keep their unique individual culture and identity in these buildings, but they also do work together for common purpose. And I tip my hat to both of you, so thank you for your hard work. And all your staff members who clearly are doing a great job because we are moving in the right direction, and it starts with the primary. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for them? All right, move on to the student board member report.
Overall, the high school performance is going well. Recently, we've had transmission, oh, sorry, a transition of administrators. Ms. Elias is still in our building, three days a week, correct? Two days a week? She's still in our building. Mr. Chacchio is in there as well, and the students are loving Mr. Chacchio so far. He's been popping into classrooms, making his presence known, meeting tons of different students. I've seen him in like four or five classes that I've had so far. He's really doing a great job. As well as Mr. Van Oostendt, our new dean, he's also been making himself very present in the hallways. The students are getting to know them, and so far, it's been a wonderful transition. And so far, it's been a wonderful transition. We have our Wellness Day that's coming up on January 27. That's a day that a lot of students are excited for. It's very similar to our Fall Fun Day that we've had. This year, we have a ton of different activities. We're hiring a motivational youth speaker to come in. He does ride a BMX bike, so that could get pretty interesting. And then we also have a, another school-wide assembly and we're having a magician do a performance. Don't know who that could be. But that should also be wonderful, so I've heard. And then there's also five different rotational stations that feature activities such as, hold on, this is going to be a stretch. There's a ton of different activities people can pick from. Self-defense, yoga, movies. For the movies, we have Lion King, live action, and Ruby Gilman and the Teenage Kraken. We have interactive food making. We also have Chalk. We have board games. We have guided painting bingo. We have PE games. For our PE games, we have Monster Ball, Basketball, and Kickball. We also offer karaoke, dance, stress management with HFM prevention, Bosie's Counseling, nail art, roadside assistance courses, Athletic Training 101, Reading Room, Coloring, Journaling, Vision Board Creation, and Bracelet Making. So we have a ton of different activities planned and I think every student can find something that's, that would enjoy them for the day. Now, for the Class of 2025, they've, their prom is still scheduled for May 3. However, the Bridgewalk in Perthshire has permanently closed, which was our booked location. The Bridgewalk did move the prom to Lanzeys at no additional cost for the prom and without changing the date. So the location for prom has been changed from the Bridgewalk to Lanzeys. No additional cost has been charged to the Class of 2025 and we still have the original date. Tickets will be between, they're projected to be between $40 and $50 for students. Students have had numerous opportunities to earn free or reduce ticket prices via volunteering for the class and just attending and earning points. We're looking at a post-prom activities. We're very interested in the Viaport in Rotterdam. They offer activities such as bowling, roller skate, laser tag, and I think we get, is it unlimited, unlimited games, I think, for like an hour? There's tons of different things. We can get a low price for the student. Of course, this is still going to be voted on by the class tomorrow at a class meeting. If, if this does approve, of course, we'll come back to the board with a formal proposal to get all of this approved through you guys. The Drama Club has just started their rehearsals for the Spring Musical, sorry, I can't speak right now. The Drama Club has started their rehearsals for the Spring Musical Beetlejuice. They already started all of their musical rehearsals, which is going great. They finished blocking their first numbers, which is really exciting. This year, it's, it's really, really happy to announce that they doubled their cast size, which is really great. We've got a ton of freshmen, the cast has doubled. And as of right now, 62 students belong to the Gloversville High School Drama Club, which is really great. Really great numbers to hear. Also, the Gloversville High School Drama Club would like to extend their gratitude for all of the new lighting equipment that we received. The auditorium has received so many upgrades within the last year. It's really impressive. We got a new stage floor laid out. We got a ton of new lights. There's, I think we have four rows of proscenium lights, which it's pretty crazy. It's a lot. It's a lot of lights. There's even these awesome lights on the side. They're ambient house lights, so we can create mood lighting inside the house, not just on stage. There's tons of different lights. We have two movers now, so we can point lights anywhere that we want in the auditorium. We're not, we're not limited to just being on stage now, which is a really great thing. So they want to say thank you for that. They're very grateful for that. With the lights, there is a tiny little bit of a problem, though. As we are projecting these amazing lights that we were, we were gifted on black curtains, which sometimes could be a little bit different to create lighting effects. So the Drama Club is, is interested in purchasing a Cyclorama curtain, also known as a psych. It's a white curtain in the back of the stage and that absorbs all the ambient light, so they can get wonderful projections and all the light can go onto the stage. So we don't just have black curtains in the back and all the light's absorbed and you can't really see it. This, the cost of the curtain would be $1,600 and it would also be used by the entire school, not just the Drama Club. It's, it's essential for, for an auditorium as well as it would help to make presentations, assemblies, and everything look a lot more professional and keep the stage in wonderful, wonderful condition. So if that's a thing that the Gloversville School District could, could possibly, you know, take on the cost of for, you know, $1,600, it's, it's wonderful that we have all these lights, but seeing them on a black curtain just doesn't really do the justice of the amazing setup that we have. And once again, this is, this is something that would definitely help out the whole school. And that's about it for the student report. Any questions?
I have a question about the, first of all, send me some information or maybe send me a meeting and we'll talk about that.
Of course.
The product that you voted, the price on. We haven't talked to you about that. The second, I have a question about the pineapple pork that was served in the cafeteria the other day, the sampling. How did that go?
It was pretty good. It was pretty good. I mean, the pork was good. I probably, we always find our way back to lunch here. But, no, the pork was good. I mean, the rice, it was rice. The rice underneath, it was rice. But the pork was good. If I went to a restaurant and I got that pork, I wouldn't be mad.
Was that the only thing they had that was unusual?
That was, that was the sample that they had.
Was it? Oh, I thought you were going to have chocolate lishes.
Just that one.
It was just, it was good, though. Luchas are great.
I had it wrong. He, he was, he was a big fan.
You said post-prom, you're going to go to Rotterdam?
Yeah.
Are you guys concerned about like the travel from prom and then waiting to get into Rotterdam?
Yeah, I can jump in on that. Should this get voted on, we're going to come back next month with a proposal to talk about transportation, the cost, and what the class is willing to do to contribute to that. So it will be formalized for you so that you can, we're going to bust them if we do anything offsite like that. But once it gets voted on, we're going to get all of the cost. We're, I'm going to work with Dr. Wodjeski on the transportation and then we'll come back.
I was even thinking about the time perspective because you have an hour drive, so.
Yeah, so the notion would be to return back to site from prom. So just like we would any other time, we would come back here to this campus. They'll be able to leave and change like they have in the past and then we would transport them. The window for the onsite is shorter than they are traditionally here. So the extended time would be very similar, but their time with activities would be shorter. If that makes sense.
The time may not have been February meeting?
That's correct.
Thank you, President. Next, we have a recommended action. I have item 7.01 through 17.32. Anybody need anything pulled or any questions or comments on?
Do you want to pull that? Kelly's got one that she wants to pull.
Sorry, sorry.
Do you know what number it is?
7.08. Yep.
Sure. All right, so I'm, we'll take a motion to approve 7.01 through 17.32. And we'll vote on 7.08 separately. So a motion for the argued grouped items. Ads, seconded by Mike. All favor on those. All right, and then a motion to approve item 7.08.